Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Cabarrus County Board of County Commissioners for our regular meeting for October the fifteenth, two thousand and twelve. This time, I would like to remind everybody in the audience, if you have a cellphone or other personal device, please make sure it's on vibrate or silent during our meeting. We would appreciate it. So this time, we always begin our meeting with the presentation of colors, and we're happy to welcome Boy Scout Troop 59 from New Gilliard Reformed United Church of Christ. Please rise. Teller, advance. Teller, prepare to post the colors. Teller, post the colors. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we would like to welcome Reverend Mike Fongamee to come from Crossroads Church to do our invocation.
Thank you for having me. Let us pray together. Lord, we thank you for such a glorious day you've given us, a reminder of your cleansing water that came and fell on some of us today, the reminder of your light that comes even after the darkest that we've seen. We thank you for that today. We thank you that we can gather as a free nation, and we thank you for that freedom that you've given us, not only freedom to live here, but freedom in Christ. Thank you for that. Lord, we ask in this time that you would bless this meeting, that you would bless it, that it would carry out all that you have commanded, that human interest would be separated by your interest, and that your will would be done today on earth. We thank you for our armed forces. We thank you for the law enforcement that protects us and serves us in our communities. We thank you for the men and women that take care of us when fires occur. And we are just so thankful, in the midst of anything economic, that you're bigger than the economy. We thank you that in the midst of anything that might scare us, that you are greater. Lord, guide this meeting, guide our hearts. When we have failed, you are right there to pick us back up again, to dust us off and to tell us that we're your own. Help us to be that for our community, to reach to those that need us most. Help us never forget that we don't only serve this community, but we serve you. Lead and protect this committee in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you very much. And if you'll still, I'm sorry, we're going to do something a little bit different if you'll still stay standing. Commissioner Carruth wanted to share something, and then we would like to have a moment of silence. Commissioner Carruth?
You're going to have to lean over to get to the microphone here. But, you know, it's been a difficult month for all of our Boy Scouts in Cabarrus County. And for those of anyone that has been in the Boy Scouts or currently in the Boy Scouts know that very rarely do you have something like this happen, but we have. We lost one of our scouts this past month, Chris Overcash. He was a member of Troop 128, which happens to be the troop at our church and the troop that my son is a member of and made Eagle Scout at. It was a kind of a trying time for all of us in the scouting community, as well as A.O. Brown High School where Chris was a junior. And I'd like, I think, this appropriate tonight, to press pause just for a moment of silence and remember Mr. Chris. Thank you.
Thank you. We are very appreciative of all of the scouts. We have a great group here tonight. And what we'd like to do is take a moment and have all of you to come up to the microphone, please. And we want you to introduce yourselves. Let us know what school you go to. You get to start first, because you're still up there. You may need to adjust the microphone. I do when I have to use that one. Tell us your name. Tell us what school you go to. Let us know what grade you're in. You can tell us your parents' name or some information about you that you'd like to share. This is your time for us to recognize you. And once you've done that, I would ask that you go to your left, my right, and Commissioner White will give you a county pin for your service tonight. So, welcome.
I'm James Barrier. I'm an eighth grader at Concord Middle School.
Thank you.
I'm George Ritchie. I'm a seventh grader at Concord Middle School.
Thank you.
I'm Curtis Brown, and I'm a sixth grader at Concord Middle School.
Thank you.
My name is George Griffin. I'm a sixth grader at Jan. Freeze Middle School.
Thank you.
My name's Hayden Earhart, and I'm a sixth grader at Concord Middle School.
Thank you.
My name's Ryan O'Connor, and I'm a fourth grader at Urban Elementary.
Thank you.
My name is Walker Hedgecock, and I go to, I'm in third grade.
What school do you go to?
Beverly Hills.
Beverly Hills. Thank you.
My name is Caleb Landreth. I'm a sixth grader, and I'm homeschooled.
Thank you. You can pull it back up if you need to.
I'm Colby Landreth. I'm homeschooled, and I am in eighth grade.
Thank you.
My name's Kay Graham. I'm in sixth grade at Concord Middle.
Thank you.
Hey, my name's Wilson, and I go to Concord Middle.
Thank you.
My name is Mac Morgan, and I'm in fourth grade at Arbrown McAllister.
Thank you.
My name's Dylan Green, and I'm in fourth grade, and I go to Royal Oaks.
Thank you very much.
My name is Michael O'Connor. I'm in fifth grade at Urban Elementary.
Thank you, Michael. And also, thank you to the leaders that we have. We appreciate your helping these young men in earning their merit badges and being here tonight with us. We couldn't, they couldn't do it without you guys. So, thank you to all of you. We do appreciate you coming. And the first item of business that we have is the approval or correction of the minutes that you have before us. Does anybody have any corrections to the minutes? If not, I would accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have approval of the agenda in front of you.
Move to approve the agenda.
And that, we have added a couple reports and the action item. So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, the first thing that we have are some recognitions. And as we did last year, I'm requesting that the commissioners approve DECA Month this time, approve the proclamation for DECA Month. As you know, DECA prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs for careers in marketing, hospitality, and management in high schools and colleges around the globe. In Cabarrus County, we have two DECA chapters, one at Concord High School and one at J.M. Robinson High School. So at this time, I would accept a motion to adopt the proclamation declaring November two thousand and twelve as DECA Month in Cabarrus County.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We also have a proclamation from Planning and Development concerning Weatherization Day two thousand and twelve. Each year, the Weatherization Assistance Program celebrates Weatherization Day on October thirtieth. As part of that celebration, weatherization agencies across the state take time to raise awareness of the program and its many benefits. And attached, we have a proclamation declaring October thirtieth Weatherization Day in Cabarrus County.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. Next up, we have informal public comments. I have two cards tonight. Our first speaker will be Price Crutchfield. Mr. Crutchfield.
Yes. Do I go right here or I'll go right here?
You may need to pull that microphone up just a little bit. Thank you, sir.
Okay. I'm not technologically savvy. I want to speak about something real serious now. I've talked about this before, and I just can't be serious enough about this. The Concord Police Department is getting away with lying under oath in our courts. Captain Scott Newell with the Concord Police Department, he broke the law and lied under oath on me in court to Judge Hamby. He told Judge Hamby, under oath, that I came into restaurants and harassed his family. I don't do that. I've never done that. I've never harassed anybody's family, period. Captain Scott Newell, the Concord Police Department, broke the law, and nothing's been done about it. Now, it's serious business when you break the law and lie under oath in our courts and tell a very conservative judge that someone came into restaurants and harassed your family. That's a serious word. This captain, this Scott Newell, the same one that had me arrested for participating in a riot, I was one person by myself, brandishing no weapons, no entourages, nothing of the kind, and he had me charged with being in a riot. He said I was rude and riotous. I was rude and raucous, but not riotous. I didn't meet that standard, and in fact, I was found not guilty in court. Their own videotapes exonerated me. This guy is taking your hard-earned tax money and throwing people in jail and charging them with starting riots. And then he's going into court, Captain Scott Newell, the Concord Police Department, and he's breaking the law and lying under oath to Judge Hamby on me, making statements that I harassed his family in restaurants. I can't let that go. I've got to defend myself. I don't want to be a victim of social penery. I call it social penery. I'm trailer trash, and I'm an easy mark for the police. Now, I was down here in Mount Pleasant the other day, a couple days ago, and I had to instruct the town administrator on his own laws. He can't read. The town administrator can't read, and I had to instruct him on how to read his own town ordinances. He called the sheriff deputies on me, two sheriff deputies, and they couldn't read either. I handed them the law, and they couldn't read the law. They said they didn't want to argue with me, but they couldn't read the law, and I had to help them, and they still wouldn't relent. So I called the sheriff, Sheriff Brad Riley, the man I voted for. Thank God, or whatever's holy. And finally, the sheriff, he made it clear to everybody that Mr. Crutchfield was in his rights, and those folks, it's my opinion that they need to take a reading comprehension proficiency exam and bring their reading skills up to par. And don't harass people that are within their rights down here in Mount Pleasant. They're trying to copy the Concord Police, and they will have to try pretty hard to get the job done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crutchfield. Next, we have Jason Osterreich.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. I hate to come back and address this issue again. I thought that we were past this, but it continually comes to my attention, month after month, that officials from the county are making disparaging remarks about me personally, whether I paid a tax increase, my family did, and what my intent is in coming to this meeting. This doesn't bother me. You can talk about me as much as you want to. I knew when I started coming in here and speaking the truth that I would be targeted. The facts that I bring are indisputable. I've never been questioned about any fact that I brought in here, whether it be spoken or written in the newspaper. Not one time has any fact ever been brought against me that I've said something that's wrong. But listen, every time I hear about personal attacks, I'm just going to come back in here and bring the facts. That's all that I'm going to do. So tonight, I'll address the facts of what people are saying about me. I want you to know this is not about me. I don't come here because of me. I come here because of the taxpayers, but I'll tell you more about that. Specifically, I did pay a tax increase. Every citizen in the county of Cabarrus paid a tax increase, and I'll show you exactly This is our tax history with respect to property values is the green line, and your tax bill is the red line. From two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, your property values stayed exactly the same. Your tax bill stayed exactly the same. In two thousand and eight, we did a revaluation of properties. People's properties went up on average twenty-one percent. People's tax bill went up on average twenty-one percent, exactly the same. From two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine to two thousand and thirteen, people's property values stayed the same. People's tax bill stayed the same. In two thousand and twelve, the county did a revaluation of the properties. People's properties dropped on average by ten percent. Actually, they dropped a little bit more, but my property, for this particular one, this is my property, my property dropped ten percent and will stay there, except my taxes stayed up here. Now, here's my question for the commission. If you didn't raise taxes, then why am I still paying taxes on property that's at the same level as when it was valued here, even though my property's ten percent less? Now, Commissioners White, Boo, and Carruth, you voted for this, so answer that. Why am I paying taxes at this level when my property's here if you didn't raise taxes? No answer?
This is your time to address us, and we don't engage in a debate at this time.
Okay.
But we appreciate the fact that you're here.
You do engage in debate when I'm not here, which I think is funny, because I'm standing right here, and you've got your chance to ask me about it, and you never want to. You want to wait until I'm not standing there. Listen, I'd actually like to ask for maybe just one or two more minutes, because there's no new, there's only one item on the new agenda, and I come to every single work session and I come to every one of these meetings, and I would just like to ask for the courtesy of maybe one extra minute to explain myself.
Well, I don't have a problem giving you one minute.
I appreciate that.
Not three minutes, but one minute, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
Because you do come every meeting.
I appreciate that. That's why I'm asking.
We also do have the rules. Thank you.
I appreciate that. My intent in being here has nothing to do with me. I, in the past month, have seen our President of the United States tell us that four murdered Americans was the result of a spontaneous result to the video, even though it was on nine eleven, with mortars and RPGs and automatic weapons and tactical strike. I see Speaker of our House, a Republican, is bipartisan, telling me that he cares deeply about our national debt and that he'd be willing to give up his speakership to solve the national debt problem, yet while he's the Speaker, national debt has gone up two and a half trillion dollars. And I see this commission coming and telling us in June that if we didn't raise taxes, we were going to face devastating cuts. And yet, in the exact same budget that you approved in your June meeting, was this page right here. We have thirty million dollars in a reserve fund and fourteen million, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars in a surplus fund. There wasn't going to be any surplus or any devastating cuts. And in fact, since then, we've given county employees salary raises, we've bought iPads for four-year-olds, and now we're talking about spending two point two million dollars on the Taj Mahala fields. I am here because I am tired of hearing things that are not the truth in America. Our politicians need to be held accountable when they're not going to tell us the truth. And as long as you're going to come in here and not say the truth, then I will be here. And you can talk about me personally if you want to. It doesn't bother me at all.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you.
Gave you some extra time. Okay, next up, we have Old Business and Lynn. There you are. I thought you were here somewhere. Sorry. Lynn Wickie is here from Cabarrus County Schools to update us on the QSCB, otherwise known as Qualified School Construction Bonds, for Cabarrus County Schools. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, good evening. I'm not sure, do we have one of the tables? No? Okay. I'll just update you then. You don't need the tables. You're pretty familiar with them, I think, by now.
Got a blue table, Mr. Wickie, if that's what you're looking at.
That is correct.
We have them both in our agenda papers.
Fine, thank you. There really was not much change on the financial sheet, which is the one with the yellow or greenish-yellow stripes. That's pretty much stayed the same. One of the reasons is we've, I believe, by now, shared a copy of our priorities for the remaining projects of QSCB. And because of the importance of, or I should say, the scale of the project of the Northwest Gym Edition, our board has asked us not to proceed at this point until that project is bid, not to proceed with other project work for the projects that are still outstanding. So we've sort of placed those in sort of a limited abeyance until the November nineteenth bidding of the gymnasium. At that time, we did, I will say, that we did have a third-party cost estimate done for us through the architects, and that confirmed that the project was on target from the standpoint of budget. So we're hopeful that we are going to have good bidding. I think the climate is certainly good for bidding right now from folks that I've talked to, and we're hopeful that that project will come in on bid. Afterwards, we will begin to work back down through that agenda of priority projects that we've shown you and hopefully get through the majority of those. But at this point, things are going well. I know there was one project that was sort of taking its time getting going, and that was the checking, if you will, what we call arc flash, checking of all the electrical panels in a variety of the schools. That project is now well underway, and I will say happily that they're not finding significant problems. Most of the work, I mean, most of the issues tend to be loose connections and dirt in the panels. Those are being cleaned as we go. The loose connections tightened. I think they replaced one part in one panel so far. So far, so good. The staff has been trained on arc flash work, and they are getting their uniforms as a result of the project, so they'll be prepared to do this on an ongoing basis from this point forward. And that's about all I have for you this evening, so I'll be happy to answer any questions you all have.
Okay, so you said the Northwest Gym, you're going to get the bids on November nineteenth?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that your bid opening day?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Correct.
Do you, does, I don't remember the board's schedule. Do y'all meet in November after the nineteenth, or is that your meeting?
It is the day of the meeting.
Yeah, that's right. They're moving the date a week.
Yeah.
So you'll get the bids that day, and then they'll, the board will be able to react, make any action that evening, because they'll have the bids.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just, I thought that was the case. I just wanted to verify. Does anybody have questions concerning any of the QSCB projects?
I have, Mr. Schu, if you'll please come up, I'd like to ask you some questions about it. I want to make certain that, one of the things that Mr. Wickie was just, was talking about is the priority of projects they've shown, is the priority of projects that are below on the blue sheet that I believe Mr. Wickie has there, postponed projects to be reinstated and then postponed projects. Are those in numerical order as to of importance?
Well, like Mr. Wickie said, Commissioner White, is when we get the bid on November the nineteenth to see how the gym turns out, then we'll know how much money we have that we can apply toward that, and depending on how the bid turns out. That's pretty simple.
No. What I'm asking is, when we're talking about the priority of projects, we've been talking about that for about sixty days now, and that y'all were supposed to vote on what y'all's priority of projects were. And what I'm trying to figure out is what's listed on the blue sheet, which starts with Coltrane Webb Elementary and goes down to Mount Pleasant High School, is that the priority that y'all have, or do we have a priority list? I don't have a priority list before me, and I'm trying to figure out, is that blue sheet show what the priority list is?
I think pretty closely, however, we did send this, you should have received this document, have you not, Ma'am?
I have not seen that.
Is that not familiar? Okay.
Let me see which one. Yeah, that was done just real recently, within the last two, three weeks at the most.
Yeah, I don't think we've gotten that.
Okay, well, I apologize for that. I thought that was sent to you.
Would you mind giving that to Mrs. Dubois or Mr. Marshall, we can get a copy of it? Because I haven't seen it.
Is that, well, obviously, you hadn't seen the list.
Yeah. I'm just trying, because when, we were looking for the priority of projects, and when we were talking, I didn't know if the priority of projects is on this blue sheet that was before us, or if it's a different priority list. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
It's actually the same, the same list, it's just in a priority order. That's the only difference.
Well, and, and, that's what I'm trying to figure out is, what's the priority?
If that would be the case, then if that would be the case, looking at Coltrane Webb Elementary, with the kitchen hood would be number one priority, and then number two would be the Mount Pleasant High School, and let's see, I think Concord High School, the auxiliary gym addition, the weight room, and the renovation of the vocational ed building, looks like they're in the same order here, Chairman White.
So the practice fields at Northwest High School are the fifth highest project concern for the Board of Education?
Well, I don't see that on here.
That's under postponed projects to be reinstated?
The practice fields is sixth on the list.
The sixth, excuse me.
It's sixth on the list, yes.
Okay. Is there, is there a reason why the practice fields are more important than replacing chillers and coolers at Mount Pleasant Middle School or Beverly Hills Elementary School or the tower, the cooling tower at Mount Pleasant Middle? I mean, what was the discussion there? I'm trying to figure out.
If I may, Commissioner White, we've talked about this many times, and my answer hasn't changed. The reason these projects are down below the line at this point, if you will, or on the postponed list, is because at this point, with the imminent, hopefully, replacement of Mount Pleasant Middle School and major renovations to Beverly Hills in our five-year plan, there really, it doesn't make sense to do this work until we've got those plans in place and know what changes will be accomplished in the buildings.
On the plan, I haven't seen, you have the five-year plan or fifteen-year plan?
Yes, sir.
Has that been sent over to, for us to look at?
It has.
Okay. Can we get that sent out? Because I haven't gotten that either. Has anybody else gotten it?
We, we have fifteen.
Have you gotten that, Mr. Marshall?
We get updates on the five and fifteen-year plan. I'm not sure when the last one we got was.
Okay. If we can get that, because we'd like to look at that. Because you're talking about replacing Mount Pleasant Middle School?
Yes, sir.
And doing significant upfits in regards to Beverly Hills?
Yes, sir.
And I think I was reading in the paper that you're wanting a Northwest Elementary School and Northwest Middle School?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Commissioner White, just while I'm up here, you know, to clarify, so you understand, this was probably before you came on the board and back in a couple of my prior terms, Mount Pleasant Middle School was actually supposed to have already been built and opening in two thousand and thirteen. But because of the economy downslide and, you know, things going the way they did, the commission said there'd be no more schools built for four or five years. So that, needless to say, got delayed. However, it's still, it's still in the planning. We still plan on doing that at some point. But with the growth in the Northwest area, then obviously, it's taken precedence now, because when you've got thirteen hundred children in Cox Mill Elementary and three or four different elementary schools there, ninety-five, ninety, well, no, actually, a hundred, a hundred and eighteen percent at program capacity, and the middle schools are approaching a hundred percent capacity at this time. And as you know, it takes time to plan, and it'll take us three years to get a elementary school built, once we acquire the land and get all those things rolling. And then, after that, that's three more years has gone down, then where are we going to be with the middle schools? So that's why we ask for the middle school to be on the capital funds request list, which you should have that already. And, you know, you can plan, but plans are subject to change, and we had it planned for the Mount Pleasant Middle School replacement, but obviously, things changed, and so we have to do it that way. And depending on how the growth comes in that area, it will be, we'll just look to you guys to help us get what we need in the Northwest area.
Can we get a copy of the capacity for each one of the schools, elementary, middle, and high school?
Absolutely.
Because the last time we looked at one, it was ninety percent, ninety-one percent capacity across the board. So that's the question I have, and that was three years ago, it was ninety-one percent capacity.
That's considerably more. I think Cox Mill right now is like a hundred and eighteen percent. W.R. Odell's like a hundred and twelve percent capacity. And the Harris Road Middle School is somewhere around ninety-seven percent. But, you know, we're across the board in the middle schools, and that area there, ninety percent plus.
With the discussion about the Northwest school, what is the, what is the plans for Royal Oaks? Because I've been hearing about that for six years, that it needs to be replaced, but every time, every time we talk about wanting, y'all talking about wanting new schools, you never talk about Royal Oaks.
Well, I agree with you. Royal Oaks definitely needs some attention. It definitely does, but it don't make sense to, I mean, at least to me, to bus children to send the Cox Mill, the Northwest area, to Royal Oaks. When Royal Oaks would have to, you know, feed from the community there, that it, in that district. And, you know, we're, we're thinking, obviously, you've heard that we're doing a redistricting plan right now for the Cox Mill area, and it doesn't include sending children to Royal Oaks.
I'm not asking about capacity at Royal Oaks. What I'm asking is that the age of the building is at such a degree that, that every time I hear about Royal Oaks needing some, needing to be replaced, it never gets on the list.
Well, you know, it's just like, when you, when you men and ladies do your budget, just like we do ours, it all depends, you do what you can do with the funding. If the funding's there, then I'm sure that is a project that we would love to do. And I, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Wickie can tell us, is that not part of the 180 million that we're requesting, trying to figure out how we're going to get?
Yes, sir. It is.
See, that's, it's in there. But if the funding's not there, then obviously, it don't get done. And that's where we look to you guys. And obviously, nobody wants a tax increase. Nobody wants to reduce services. But yet, the children keep coming, and, you know, we have to provide for them. And that's what we're trying to do, and it's just like what you're doing. You try to, try to provide services to meet the need of the community, Cabarrus County taxpayers, and that's exactly what we try to do on the Board of Education. But it all depends on what we get from you.
Will the Northwest Elementary School replace the Royal Oaks School?
No, it's not, that's not the plan at this point.
Thank you.
Hey, I will interject that, the other commissioners, we did get today the request that you probably read about in the paper. The board members don't have it yet, commissioners don't have that list yet. We got that today, or staff got it today. We are planning on you coming to our next work session in November, and we will get a presentation from the schools on the one-time money. And I believe that staff is working on some additional numbers as far as the capacity goes, and as soon as those numbers are plugged in, we will get a new spreadsheet on the capacity numbers. And I don't believe that we have, and I don't know when, if you've done recently, your updated five-year, 15-year plan, or if you're in the process of doing that. But of course, whenever that's available, we appreciate, we can schedule a work session for you to present that to us. It takes a while for, you know, for all those things to get updated, and, and then you guys have to make, do your motions on it before we, we get it. So, but I know that at least two of the three things that you asked about, we should be getting this week, some of it, and surely before our next work session, we'll be getting some information. So, always good to, to ask for things. Thank you.
Really, and it's like a moving target, but we're working on it. Thank you for letting us speak.
Madam Chairman, I've got one question, and I guess this, and related to that, because I'm kind of puzzled, and I, because I know that we've had all the formulas we've done over the years, and all the things we looked at, and in 2008, pretty much, you know, residential building came to a standstill in the county. And I know, and I don't, I'm going to put Jonathan on the spot here, the, when we, you know, the, the number of lots that have been built out in the last four years is much less than what it was prior, the four years prior to that. Is that we're, I mean, and, you know, because we, we looked at the capacities, and how, how did it creep up from being under-capacity to suddenly now being over-capacity when there's not really any home, that many homes being built? Seems like that, you know, we would see somewhere else, numbers appearing that would reflect that the growth in the school system, or is it just, are a lot of people moving into, you know, multifamily housing, or, you know, are they shifting within the school system? I mean, because I know that we, we looked at the numbers, and they were relatively flat, you know, really, 2009, 2010, as far as enrollment figures.
You know, obviously, you and everyone else knows that Cabarrus County is such a great place to live.
Oh, I know that.
And during the, the five-year, four, five-years turn-down of the economy, then there was a lot of houses on the market that were actually the older homes, a lot of older homes on the market. And therefore, people that are moving are taking these older homes, and the new building hasn't been there. But it is picking up, obviously, you know, based on what we're looking at with the building permits that's been pulled, the lots that's available, that type thing. And in some of these subdivisions, particularly in the Northwest area, when they get fully built out, I believe one of them was 570-some lots, I believe. And then there's another one, I think that Kannapolis has just recently annexed in, or whatever, you know, I, I don't recall all the details on that, Mr. Wickie may, but it's 275. And the lot, the, the building permits have been pulled. And so, you know, what do we do? Wait till the houses go up and then say, oh, we got to build an elementary school? You know, we have to plan ahead, especially when it takes three years, you know? And, you know, we've had a, we've, we haven't done anything for four years, as far as opening schools and that kind of thing. And so, when you sit in a county this is fast-growing as Cabarrus County is, even through the recession and all of that, Cabarrus County has still maintained a steady increase in student population, and we're somewhere close to 30,000, maybe more now. When I got on the school board in the year 2000, Ms. Poole was on the board at that time, and I think we had like 15,000 students. We're upwards of 30,000 now, just 12 years later. I mean, that's unheard of for a community school system to double its size in 12 years. And so, that speaks of what Cabarrus County is all about, and our school system in particular. So, hopefully, I answered it a little bit.
I did. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you both very much.
Thank you, Chairman Poole.
I'm sure we'll have a good discussion at the work session. Next, we have our consent agenda items.
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And next up, we have one item under new business. And Perry here? There you are. Sorry, I was still looking for Londa, and I will not make the, I won't, won't even make a disparaging comment at this point. But we are glad to have you with us, Perry.
Thank you.
Perry's going to talk about a memorandum of understanding regarding gym supervisors.
I think you have the copy there that, that has been given to you, and this is basically just an understanding of something that we've been doing over the years. We've never had it in writing. We utilize the school facilities for our gym supervisors, for our youth basketball program. We've utilized a lot of the school personnel to work. Sometimes, we don't have school personnel. We have outsiders that are using the facilities. And the schools just wanted to be able to be on the same page, to know who's responsible for what, as far as cleanup, scheduling conflicts, anything that may arise. They would just wanted it in writing. And the school board approved this at their October meeting. The Volunteer Youth Leagues are in cooperation with it as well. We understand it from the Parks Department, and we would like for you guys to approve it as well.
Hey, are there any questions concerning the MOU?
Uh, this one, I've got just one or two, and I don't know whether it could be added in or whatever, but, or, has it been addressed? I'm sure it has, as the, as far as the liability is concerned, when you're looking at the youth leagues, do they all, they're all, are they all organized charter nonprofits?
Yes.
And they have their, they have insurance?
They, they submit that to us each year.
Okay. Are we, are they additionally insured, are we additionally insured on their policies in the school system, or is that, how is that set up? So that, I mean, that's my only concern, is that, whose fault would be, where would it go if you had a, a situation happen in one of the gyms, when one of our volunteer supervisors?
Depending on the circumstance, obviously, I think it would fall back on the youth league if it was something that we knew about, if it was a light pole or something that fell, or something in the gym that we knew about that we didn't fix, you know, there may be some liability on us. But as far as just the liability, they have their own insurance and everything with their organization.
Okay, okay, okay.
You can always tell the insurance guy, can't you? Or, sorry, the risk management guy. Any other questions concerning the MOU? Okay, if not, I would accept a motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding regarding gym supervisors. I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next, we have some appointments to different boards and committees. First up, we have an appointment for the Public Health Authority of Cabarrus County. There is a vacancy due to the resignation of Dr. Vucnic, and there is a recommendation that Derry Caldwell be appointed as the public member for a three-year term ending June the 30th, 2015.
I'd move that we appoint Mrs. Derry Caldwell accordingly.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And next up, we have, for the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, need a motion to remove Annette Archer from the roster. She has had a scheduling conflict and has been unable to complete the required training. So, at this time, I'd accept a motion to remove Annette Archer from the roster of the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, or the JCPC. We, I need a motion to appoint David Zaneca, Police Chief Designee, to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, to complete an unexpired term ending September 30th, 2013, to appoint Zachary Lustig, student under 18 years of age, to the JCPC for a two-year term ending June 30th, 2014, and to remove Terry Stansel from the JCPC roster effective November 1st, 2012, and to express appreciation for her many years of service. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, and I have a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And next, we have appointment to the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. According to the Regional Ombudsman, Linda Barnhart wishes to be reappointed to this committee for a three-year term ending October 31st, 2015. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I also want to make a comment. There are five vacant positions on this committee for the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. It is a vital committee in this community, and I would encourage anyone who has a willingness to serve to please fill out an application. We will be more than happy to put you to work very quickly. That is the last of the appointments that I have. We also have reports.
Go out with a bang.
Commissioners, for, with the EDC's quarterly report is also included in your packet for your reading pleasure. And at this time, we have a moment to receive updates from commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities or on various boards and committees. Has anybody had meetings this week that you need to report back on?
Tell you a little bit about the youth council. At their last meeting, they elected the leadership of their council. So, the president of the youth council, Seth Bolenbecker, and they're off to a great start, a great start. Next week, they're taking a tour of the incubator farm, so that should be enjoyable for them. Also, last Friday, I believe it was a citizenship focus, and I wanted to thank Leslie, who's on the youth council, for being a participant and moderating the panel of discussion with the elected officials.
Great. Any other comments on our liaisons? Okay. I'd also like to remind, as far as getting the applications to serve on county boards and committees, a few that I'd encourage people to think about. Harrisburg Fire Advisory Board has two positions available. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, one vacant position. Library Board of Trustees in the Kannapolis area. Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, five positions. Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, six positions. Region F Aging Advisory Committee, one position with an expired term. Transportation Advisory Board, two vacant positions. And I think you still have some vacancies on the youth council. Is that correct? Two vacancies on the youth council. Do you know?
Anyone that's interested in the at-large positions, which would be homeschool, private school, any of those representatives, or we need representatives from that sort of realm. So, any homeschool or private schools?
Okay.
Please apply.
We are, we're calling all of those youngsters to join that commission, and that, that board does a lot of good things, so I think it's very enjoyable for the members there. Hey, the other thing, just as a reminder, as anybody watching this at home tonight knows, this is broadcast live, our regular meeting. But our broadcast schedule for the commissioners' meetings, Sunday and Saturday at 1:00, Sunday and Tuesday at 6:30 p.m., Thursday and Friday at 6:30 p.m. And we show the work session up until we have this meeting that airs live, and then this meeting will run until we have the next work session. So, we appreciate all the viewers that we have at home. I know that no matter where I am, there's always somebody that talks about seeing us on TV, and I think it's a good thing that, that we're able to be out there and educate everybody on what we're doing in the county. So, it's a, it's a good, it's a good thing that service, I think, that's provided. So, this time, the next item is general comments by board members. Does any board member have just a general comment?